Okay, welcome to the Wednesday, July 29th. Come caucus of the Albany Common Council. For the record, council members, Conti, Igo, Frederick, O'Brien, Valerie, Love, and Hoyy, our president, along with city clerk, council clerk, Danielle Gillespie, legislative aide, senior legislative, Michelle Andre, and our research counsel, John Rafael Pichardo, along with corp counsel Brett Williams. Okay. Oh, he's not here. I'll check in with him. So just, just jumping into the. Mr. Robinson has also joined us at this point. Just jumping into the. Agenda. Going down. First order. Of businesses, the approval minutes from previous meeting will have the July 20th meeting minutes for. For passage, we often knows. Next on the agenda, moving down to consideration of vetoes, we have the video of ordinance 158119. Mister. Pichardo, can you just take us through the, real quickly, the process of bringing that back on the floor? And in the, in the motion we need to override?
Yes, it's a motion to. Motion of reconsider the ordinance number, notwithstanding the objections of the mayor. Then it needs to be seconded, and that's basically it.
Okay. So Mister Hoyy, do you want to make that motion? I mean, you can't, it's yours, or I'll make the motion and I'll need a second, okay? When the time comes for that. Any discussion? On the, the matter? You trying to get in there, Mister Hoyy, or no? You good? You're still muted.
Still muted.
Pay attention to the road now, okay? You can, you can black us out and just talk.
Okay, now I got it. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, basically, I'm not going to make a speech. I'm not going to have anybody from the outside come in and talk in favor or against. I think we should just do it. We've heard this, we've spent hours on this, so I'd appreciate if everybody, we just let it go. Thank you.
Okay.
Kelly, I just wanted to add something from our last caucus that I spoke upon real quick, just real quick. I misspoke last time to the council members. It's not an unlisted action, it's a type two action for seeker. And I got a recommendation, I got a notice from NICOM looking doing my research. And it says, states in fact, when it comes to secret for a type two action. All that NICOM says is that once an action is determined to be a type two action, no further secret action is required to be taken. And then their recommendation is it's recommended that public bodies acknowledge either in their meeting minutes or findings of fact and determination. That an action was determined type two action for purposes of secret. So that's it, and it's easy, just we, it's easy to acknowledge that on the record at the next meeting. Cause it's, doesn't require full secret review, does not at all.
Okay, thank you, Mister Pichardo. We're also joined by council members, Docheifman. Fahey. And Johnson. Hopefully I didn't miss anyone, I don't think I did. Okay.
What happened to?
Mister, yeah, when you first came in, I acknowledged you mute, sir, so we're good. Okay, that was that consideration vetoes into the agenda. We have ordinance 158120 by Miss Frederick. You wanna? And it talks about government city departments using surveillance technology. It'll go to public safety, but Miss Frederick, would you care to? If you were.
Yeah, thank you, Kelly. So the purpose of this legislation is to ensure that we, as the city of Albany legislative body, have the appropriate oversight on any facial recognition technologies that are used by city departments. So on a national level, studies have shown that the technology can disproportionately affect people of color, women, and other marginalized groups. Studies have shown the technology is not advanced yet and can lead to false positives with people of darker skin complexions, as well as softer facial features. So ultimately, this gets us the ability to be involved in the process. And it would require departments to submit an annual report to us indicating if the technology is being used as intended. Whether or not the benefits outweigh the cost, and then also based on a different, a number of benchmarks, whether or not it is disproportionately impacting those marginalized groups. And also any new technologies that want to be used in the future, they would have to come in front of the common council for approval and for proper notification. So I am in the process of rewording this, and we are going to have an updated legislation for Monday's introduction. But you know, this will be, as Kelly stated, this will go to public safety. And I'm open to any amendments based on the feedback received.
Thank you, Miss Frederick. Okay. Well, that would be it for. The ordinances, next, our resolutions, resolutions introduced. This is also by Miss Frederick at 728120R. It's a seeker review for the 76 project that's her ordinance on that was 96120. Miss Pichardo or, or Miss Frederick, we care to, want to say anything about that process?
This is just a standard seeker resolution. It's left intentionally blank for purposes of the investigation that's being completed shortly. And that it will be referred to planning committee very shortly. And we will have the full determination at the next committee hearing, once the investigation is almost done, so.
Thank you, Miss Pichardo. So that would, that's it for our agenda. Anyone have any questions or comments? Otherwise, I'll just kind of go into leadership conversation that we. Okay, all right, so yeah, just look at my notes here. We spoke. First and foremost, in leadership regarding the violence, the constant, it seems ever present. And I had spoken from my dealings in my area with, you know, some of my folks. And there's a genuine fear, I had the same conversation with Councilman Johnson also about a real fear. People have about having their loved ones out on the street. Some people have issues even in their own homes, depending on the area they're in. And it's, it's just, it's unfortunate and unacceptable when we have to do something. It's basically what I explained to the mayor. Said to the mayor, she explained that they were working on some things for some of the cases that are, that are out there. There's some grand jury convening, so for the folks that there is a chance of taking off the street, the grand jury can deal with that. And pull them off the street. The. She also mentioned, or mentioned that, you know, this is all COVID related. I mean, not to dump everything on COVID, but it really does impact public safety in the community. Because if you think about it, the police can't do what they, they do to the degree that they do it. Also, you talk about mental health or counseling or other services that folks would normally get. That they're not, and they haven't been for all these months due, due to COVID. So. It's being worked on, the grand jury option is, is what's going on for trying to pull some of these arrests together and get some of these people off the street. Also, Crime Stoppers, I'm feel on the board of Crime Stoppers. Crime Stoppers is a way to anonymously report stuff like folks, council members here to reach out. And when you're having conversations with your constituents and let them know that they can anonymously report these things. And not put themselves or their family at risk. I know in a lot of these instances, we say, see something, say something, you need to, you know, tell someone. But it's not safe in some of these neighborhoods for some folks to be telling or putting, putting that out there. Also, I recently came across an issue also, and I'll have to take this up with the police chief regarding police responding to the area of this violence and then knocking on doors. Some people are panicked when, even though, you know, they're in the vicinity of a shooting, say, and the police knock on the door. They take it as the neighborhood looking and thinking that they're, you know, telling on them or what have you. So I don't know how you talk to these people without talking to them, but I'll have to remind the police chief that some people feel unsafe by the police responding and reaching out to them. So that's for that, the police reform and stuff.
Yeah, so I just, I just want to echo what you, what you said. In my district, I had one of my constituents whose home was shot up three times within the last month. On three separate occasions. And so I did have a conversation with the chief, the last conversation that him and I had. You know, he said that he was going to increase police presence in the area. And that the next day, one of my constituents' house, the same house was shot up again. And so I told him that if you're going to increase the police presence in the area, that the officers need to get out and they need to make, knock on people's doors, like you said, and make people feel safe and know that there is a real presence. And you know, not just in. Not just saying that there's a presence, but actually people, you know, interacting with the police officers that are in that particular beat. So I just want to echo what you said, and I concur.
Okay. Thank you. On the police reform, that those meetings, the letters is supposed to go out next week. The thing that, that came about as a part of the governor's directive. First meeting's supposed to be amid August, excuse me, August. The letters should go out next week, letting folks know that, you know, the, their present, presence is requested at, be a part of these conversations. The idea is for the larger group to push over the course of a month, up to two months, to come up with, with ideas. And kind of lay the framework, and then it's going to, you know, be spread out to other groups to do the actual work. It's just, the initial thing is setting the framework. So. That's that, did you have anything to add to that, Jenny? For his arm, yeah.
I don't think so, just the note that all of the police and apologies for being late. I had a work thing that I had to do, other work. All the meetings of the full committee will be streamed and we'll be getting, they're still working on the exact makeup of who is in the different groups that are in that committee. And we should be getting them soon. They said that it might be, they might be giving us a broader brush soon. And they won't have this specific people for a little bit because the different, some groups that they've reached out to, but they don't know exactly who in that group will be participating. So we should be getting, I would say, as time kind of moves along, we'll be getting more and more information on that.
Yeah, and so another issue was the census, where our numbers are still way down. So we got to get the word out. The mayor spoke, and her staff spoke of some of the efforts, and it seems that they're doing a lot. They partnered with a lot of community organizations, churches, and some other organizations. And there was an understanding or an expectation from the mayor and her staff that these folks would be the boots on the ground, kind of doing some of the work. And as it turns out, it's not happening to the degree that the mayor, the mayor would like. So. They're, they're pressing and trying to do some stuff in the, in the coming weeks. Their door hangers, I went down and grabbed the box of them, some census door hangers available at City Hall, you can stop in and grab them. That kind of lays out the process of you, in this time of COVID, you can, you know, not hang it on the door or not. And leave that information out there and just emphasize how much and how important it is for us to get our numbers up. And. So they're working on that. And if anyone has a question or comment, just jump in at any time. Next, park issues. In particular, I have issues with Arbor Hill Park and the care and upkeep of it. And it's just not being done to the extent that I think it should be done. But I'm being informed that that's happening everywhere. All of the parks are suffering, the staff of DGS, and I don't know what, I'm told they're down 40, 40 folks there. And the seasonal, they're not, they're trying to hire seasonals, but no one's, no one's taking the job. So I don't know what that number of 40, what percentage of their workforce it is, but that's a lot. And so that's why the parks look the way they look and the size of the roadway, the islands, that, you know, that traffic lights look the way they look. They just don't, they simply don't have the people to keep up with it, is what, is the way it was explained to us.
They did say that they were hiring some people, so they're hopeful within the next week or so. Maybe a bit more, will be on a more regular schedule. They have an overall park maintenance plan, and they're hoping that they'll be able to get to the staffing level where they can actually do that plan and, and get to the mowing that is, it's happened. I mean, I know in my ward, the parks in my ward, they've seen better days. So it's, it should be happening, hopefully soon.
Right, and that's, and the plan, the parks plan, I had a conversation with, with Sergio, probably two or three months back about it, and, you know, areas of responsibility between DGS and parks. And he said that there was a plan, and there was supposed to be a schedule for, for the stuff to be done. And they just never were able to get on track, and they're still, still struggling with that. So that was, that on the parks issues, does anyone have anything?
Hey Kelly? While we're on staff, while we're on staffing, I've been told that the Albany police have the 30 recruits. Seven have dropped out, and we've had some recent retirements from the police department. So I feel like that we're going to be, we're down, but we're not making up the ones that we are down. Do we have any, what are we going to do about that?
Jack, I wanted to respond about the parks.
Oh, go for it, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, like, when they first started talking about merging the parks, that was one of the concerns that I had. Because historically, there's been a lot of finger pointing going on when it comes to who's actually responsible for what. And all is, all we're dealing with now is even more chaos, because it's even more parks that are not being taken care of. So. You know, to hear about plans, I know COVID, but you know, if you go to certain parts of Albany, the parks are kept fine. And you know, the excuses, they sent a lawnmower up. And then the other thing that I wanted to talk about is people who are, that have a use of our parks, they're, they're having to mow the lawns themselves. That doesn't make any sense, and we never did anything like that. So I'm not understanding how, you know, all of the services are basically being cut from, taken from us.
Right, and just, right, and the way they justify that or explain it was a shortage. Some of the parks that look like they have, are better and are kept up. The mayor mentioned that they're, they're like residents and folks in those areas, in those parks that are, that are kind of maintaining that stuff, both the gardens and, and, and any other stuff that you see. They're short, and that I believe, and that I can see. But. We have to, we have to stay on them. She said that she'd hope that it's going to improve pretty soon here. And. That's. Where we're at with that.
Derek. I had that come up, where I had a park with issue garbage, I actually cleaned it up myself. Cause the mayor's office told me that they were short staffed and they couldn't do it. So I cleaned it up myself, to be honest with you.
And just to be clear, I'll get you Judy, just to be clear, yeah, I mean, we pay folks, it's a municipality. We have staff that should take care of this stuff, but, I mean, times are tough now. And. I mean, of course, Mister Flynn or neighbor shouldn't be maintaining the park, but sometimes when you have to. It happens.
I disagree, Kelly, I disagree that, you know, that, that 100% of the time, people are having to take care of those parks. And you know, it should be a rotating schedule, people ask for, you know, the new schedules, you know, the COVID schedules. It should be some type of schedule, some type of expectation that we should be able to receive from the city. It's no way that it's acceptable to say that we don't have the manpower to do, it's people down there. You know, I know that, and you know, we know that. So you know, if they're going to certain, it's not the equity, we talked about equity. This is where you see equity at.
Mister Doche, I'm sorry, I was muted.
So I mean, watch what you wish for in the way of equity, because Woodlawn Park, I've been complaining about it for three years now, four years, we put in the playground equipment, they didn't landscape it properly. The grass has gotten so, there's, there's issues with uneven ground, under than. Six inch grass and weeds, et cetera, these days. It's, it is a dangerous situation in Woodlawn Park. I've been saying that, it's now more dangerous than ever with regard to the hidden hazards. In some of these places, I had an opportunity to be down there quite a bit with my granddaughter in the last month. And. Tom and I take turns watching our granddaughter and the other one weeding. And weeding, not in general around where, where there's vines that are the size of trees, growing up against the Little League fence and that kind of thing. But the weeds that are growing in the newly. Put in mulch, you know, from four, three years ago, that are, you know, a foot and a half high. And my granddaughter thought it was kind of fun when she was being asked to cart the weeds that her grandfather had pulled over to the, you know, the trash can that was then overflowing. I've had people complaining about the basketball courts there. And they used to have a regular person come in in the morning. You know, there's broken bottles and trash all over the place, and that is not being kept up. So it's a, it's a really deplorable situation. This is something we really should be begging the administration to take care of. Cause what else can people do these days? You're so limited in what you can do. Let people go to clean and well-maintained parks. That is something that should be basic. And frankly, I would prefer to see the parks maintained for that reason than for us to be, even deal with potholes in the city. So. Derek, come up and I'll show you Woodlawn Park. And it's, and it's a small postage stamp kind of park, you know, it's equivalent of like four city lots. And that's it. And I know that there are problems, you know, all over the city. And the other thing that is happening is there's roots tripping hazards underneath some of this grass or, you know, or it's bare, et cetera. So if you could, if the leadership could convey to the administration that we're all complaining about the condition of the parks, and when you really look at it in terms of quality of life kinds of issues. I really, you know, there's got to be an oasis for people to be able to go to. I was also over at the spray pads in Swinburne. The grass over there is very, you know, long. And, you know, similar kinds of issues with uneven ground, et cetera. The spray pads were in nice condition, pretty, pretty nice condition. There was a couple that are not functioning 100%, but yeah, so. Please ask them.
Okay, we'll do, that's a pre, excuse me, priority of members. Mister Robinson? Got, you want to go, Jenny?
I just wanted to say that that is something that, one of the reasons why we came, it came up is that we've been, and we will continue to, to share that, but it's just clearly an issue throughout the city. So we, we, it is something we'll continue to press on, but we have been definitely talking a lot about it.
Mister Robinson, Mister Baller, and then Mister Hoyy.
Yeah, so I just wanted to just piggyback off of what everybody's saying, but it's not just the parks. It's these other properties that are in the city. I remember last year, the commissioner came before us, and he said that he was going to dedicate a team of people, of staff, when they were restructuring their department to pay attention to the problem properties in our city that are, have been, you know, that are consistently have issues with overgrown brush, consistently have issues with people dumping. And even like, you know, the sidewalks are in front of properties that now have, you know, weeds going through the, going through the sidewalks. And he assured us that he was going to dedicate a team of people to take care of these. Because we all find ourselves in, you know, calling about the same problem properties every single year. And so, you know, I really want, you know, to know what's going on with the commissioner and his response to many of these problem properties in the city.
That's the DGS commissioner you're referring to, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Mister Bowery?
A lot of this has to do with the fact that we are down roughly $18 million. I really think we need to have a conversation about, about that, as well as, you know, a conversation about the fact that there was no funding in the federal bill for state or local, in the, in the Senate bill for state or local government. Because that's a lot of reasons why we're in this situation. You know, DGS is down 40 to as much as 70 people, if you count seasonals, it depends who you speak to. The police department's down 57, and if you add in the additional retirees, that number goes up. You know, Park and Recreation took a beating with its workforce, especially with its youth workforce programs. So a lot of these issues that we are facing as a city, a lot of other cities are facing. But if you go down to the core, the core is we've been asked to make massive cuts in half of a year. So you're asking municipality, cut 10% of your budget roughly in half of the year. So you're seeing massive cuts now affect everywhere. And. It is frustrating, and it is frustrating, and I know it's frustrating for the men and women that are working and trying to get through as many of these projects as possible. You know, I, you know, I've, I've been frustrated as well with some of the lag time and trying to get things cleaned up. You know, and to the point where I go in my weed whacker, like I mentioned last week, to just get it done. And it's, I mean, I think we need to have a conversation of what else we can do to push without federal funding, because that's why we're feeling so much pain. I, I, I mean, if anyone ever questioned if our summer youth program was effective, well, look at what's going on in our city when you drop a summer youth program from 1,200 to 400 or 500. Look what's going on in New York City when you drop a summer youth program from 20,000 to 1,000 or 1,200. So these programs have a net benefit for our city. So I really hope that at some point, we can get together and. Uh, so I really hope that at some point we can get together and talk about strategies as well as what we can do to try to address some of these issues.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Howie.
Yeah, I'm gonna echo a lot of what I've heard. I just wanna add that um I heard the dispatchers, uh, police, uh, emergency dispatchers are down seven. They had hired a bunch of people. Um, and a lot of people realized how hard the job was and dropped out. As far as DGS, I used to always be able to write to Molly McGuire and C.C. Sergio and get an answer. And I've sent them emails over the last three weeks and I'm not getting an answer back. We have properties that are abandoned or deserted and the grass is like two feet high and in the past, they were able to keep up with that. And the one thing I'd ask uh the leadership to find out is the in-house um street paving that uh was supposed to be done, is that gonna happen this year? Um, I have a lot of neighbors asking me about that and I appreciate what everybody's doing. Thank you.
Okay, so uh, Tom, I'll, I'll, I'll give an answer on the the in-house paving, sorry. Did I miss anyone else?
Yes.
Uh, Rich, uh, Richard, actually, Richard, and then we'll go back to you, Mr. Johnson.
And me.
Judy.
Conti Johnson.
Yeah, so I I'm really, I guess I'm of mixed minds, cause I hear what Alfredo is saying. Uh, and I understand the financial constraints um and everything, and I also hear what Judy is saying about the importance of parks. Um, and, you know, I know before this whole COVID stuff hit, the mayor had this internal quality of life task force um with all the departments involved to try to do, you know, strategic focus on these issues, which I guess is really not possible to pull that together, get that going again until we get out of this whole issue, but um I understand the financial issues. At some point, we're gonna have to bite the bullet, uh, depending on what happens in DC. Uh, but, you know, I also come back, parks are really important, my parks are suffering also. Uh, and property maintenance is important, whether it's, you know, the vacant lots, the debris, the amount of debris and litter. Uh, and all of that, it really does send a message to people about how they value their neighborhoods in the city and everything else. And, you know, it's it's just something we need to deal with, uh, because I think that builds up um, you know, ownership and pride, uh, et cetera. So um, I'm just going all over the place, but I understand the financial issues, but there are, you know, the 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 parks, property maintenance, property maintenance, uh, stuff like that, weeds all over the place. Uh, they're important and I, you know, I don't know how we also engage residents to be a part of this process to, you know, pull weeds or or neighborhood cleanups and things like that and it's just, it's a very frustrating time for a lot of us.
Thank you, Richard. Uh, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, you know, listening to, um, every time it's a concern brought up, it's, you know, people coming up talking about numbers, you know, like if you, we keep um ignoring the residents and you're ignoring the employees. People are leaving Albany and leaving those jobs for a reason, but we, we're acting like we don't know what's going on. You know, um, it 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 has to be some changes made if we're gonna ever get different results. What's been going on, it's been going on for um the longest and it's just getting worse now and they have uh an excuse because of COVID. And it's, it's like, you know, like I'm, Judy, I'm, I'm familiar with uh Woodlawn and Woodlawn on its fine, on its worst day is better than some parks downtown ever been. So, you know, um, I, like, I, I know that uh it now is starting to um spread out all over the city that um other parts, parks aren't being um cared for. And that's why uh months ago, I called that it need to be a change. It need, it needs to be some changes. You know, we get, we get, you get, we hearing too much of the same thing from people. So a lot of unhappy people, but not, you know, nothing is being done about it. So that's why you hear my frustration and when some of these points, cause I've been speaking about them for three years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Shea.
Um, thank you. Um, I'm a little frustrated when we talk about um being in the hole eighteen million dollars when we met two weeks ago and we were promised details uh that they would be providing us with details. They presented us with information and I was asking for some of the details behind that so we could understand and I think that some of it, my point was, some of it um, I think was potentially double reported both as um a a loss in revenue and also um a need to cut additional uh positions uh in the police, for example, for um activities that would be paid overtime. Um, we need to press for that information. Actually, you know, I gotta say, I I feel like the administration is completely disrespecting us because they provided us with cursory information, we asked for information, we were assured we were gonna get that information. We were told potentially by that Friday and here it is two weeks later and we still do not have that information. Um, I also wanna note that some of that breakdown, we were told we were going to get at the prior meeting we had, a month before the meeting that we had two weeks ago uh on this. So with regard to really understanding where we are at, um, we should have that information. The other aspect is, we're supposed to be engaged in a conversation about where those cuts are taking place, where they're being made. That's part of the goal of having that conversation about where we are. So when Alfredo is talking about, well, we're down eighteen million dollars and they're making cuts, well, why don't we have that information about where they're really making cuts? If they're making cuts and what's really going on uh here. So um, I find, I find it very frustrating and disturbing the lack of information that we are being provided. We are entitled to that information, as I've noted in a email to the leadership, it may be time for us to submit a FOIL request for that information and then share that FOIL request with the press so that the press knows we're frustrated in not getting this kind of uh information, that that this is not open and transparent uh government. Um, with regard to property maintenance, excellent point. Um, but I wanna note that when somebody is, when a property has gotten to the point where it's not being maintained like that, then we have the ability to find those property owners and then also bill them for the cost of doing the work. So there's an opportunity to, you know, to not have um people being laid off um by having resources devoted to those things that can actually generate revenue. It's not gonna be fully reimbursed, um, but it certainly is going to be a far lesser uh impact on our budget if we're actually doing the follow-through with finding and and billing people and get, getting people, um, especially absentee landlords, the message that they need to be maintaining these uh properties, including the stuff out in front of the sidewalk areas, et cetera, which I note um, AUSU has introduced legislation to increase the fines uh for and require people to maintain um sidewalk areas as well. That's it. And I'll be sending, I'll be sending Derek photos of Woodlawn Park.
So I just wanted to say, Judy, that I, as you know, I share your frustration and it is something that regularly, I I mean, every single time. Um, and it's, you're right, it's incredibly frustrating. Um, I would hate to think that the council would have to foil to get information, but um we've, we might be at that stage. Um, and it is, uh, what we continually hear is um, we have to wait for the federal government, we have to wait for the federal government. And um it's just not, that doesn't necessarily, we're going to have to make budget cuts. So the eighteen million dollars is not yet out of, we're not yet operating at that stage for the most part. We haven't made, there hasn't been dramatic cuts. Um, and those cuts will be felt and, yeah, we have to see where they are. So um.
We talk us, we talk us to um Mr. Robinson and Mr. Johnson's point that promises have been made and things are not being done and we have a chronic problem in the city with regard to really addressing some of these issues properly.
I just wanna say, can I say something? I I just wanna remind people, uh, you know, just how incredibly sensitive this issue is. As, I guess we want more details that I, and we were promised more details. However, uh, as soon as we start talking about, you know, X number of cuts in DGS, X number of cuts, wherever it is, um, you know, you're gonna have a lot of families extremely upset. And if somebody's gonna be coming through, the local government, and I, you know, I do believe that that's gonna happen. That's what I've heard will happen despite the fact that there was nothing in the Senate bill. Um, because there is those kind of negotiations that go on. Um, you know, I think you would wanna wait very, very late before you you talk about where those cuts are because um, you know, people are barely making it now and if they're facing, if they have to worry about losing their jobs, you know, that's something you really wanna talk about as late in the process as possible. So, uh, you know, I think we have to be really sensitive to that.
But, but Kathy, I, I, but I, but I have to.
I see you, Richard.
We're, we're asking for revenue, projected revenue information, the breakdowns that they already gave us. They already told us there's eighteen million dollars and we've asked for additional information regarding departmental um cuts, uh, departmental revenue uh losses uh that they've projected.
Um, and Jude, I have, I have no problem with that. I, you know, they asked, they promised to give us that information and I agree with that. I'm just talking about.
Okay, alright. Yep, uh, just a moment here. Uh, and Ms. Faye, folks are already upset and scared that we're, we're past that point. Um, so.
I don't think so.
I, I.
I think it can get mighty worse when you start talking about numbers.
I, I think it can, but uh, but we, we need this information. Um, okay, so Ms. Frederick, I apologize for missing you. Mr. Conti, then Mr. Baller.
Thanks, Kelly. I just wanna comment on one point that Judy made there and the ability to find some of these um houses or vacant lots that are not having the upkeep um that's necessary. So I had a conversation and I'm sure many of us have multiple properties in our wards that are frustrating cause we get consistent calls about the lack of care. Um, and I spoke to the commissioner of Billings and Codes and he expressed his frustration with the fact that they go through this process, they cite the owners and they give them the various fines um for everything that they violated. But then when it gets to the courts, there's a sense of leniency and so the, the slum lords, for lack of a better term, walk away with a small bill and they just continue because they don't see any reprimand for their actions. So I don't know what we can do to sort of um get to an understanding with the courts that we actually want to see um some changes occur, but that's one of the frustrations that the commissioner seems to be having with a lot of these properties.
Thank you, Ms. Frederick. Mr. Conti.
Uh, thanks. Um, and I, I agree with a lot of stuff that's been said here. Uh, I just wanna make one observation. The, the council as an institution should never foil for information.
Right.
That right of access is enshrined in the city charter. Um, and we should not foil and then go through the delaying tactics of a foil. Uh, we have acts, the right of direct access under the charter, the council as an institution. Um, if that doesn't happen, we have options either to subpoena or to hold departments or or uh individuals who don't comply in contempt. So, but we should, we should never foil.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Mr. Baller.
I, I guess my whole point was to spark what we've just had. And that's an honest conversation that's not fearless of the problems that we have ahead of us. I hope we get the federal funding. I, I think we need to continue to fight to get our first share of federal funding. I don't see it as a bailout. I see it like a relief, just like we've, we've helped Wall Street, why are we not gonna help our people who pave our streets and keep our streets safe? So I hope we get that funding, but I also think we need to have conversations and not be afraid of those tough conversations about the reality if we don't get the federal funding that we deserve. And actions have already been done. I mean, there's actions that have already been done. We only had, we, we are fifty-seven offices down. That's twenty percent of our withdrawal. We brought in thirty, but now we're down to twenty-three. We have additional retirees. What size class are we gonna bring in in January? We need to have those conversations. We're down forty people in DGS, depending who you talk to, if you count the seasonal, potentially up to seventy. Those are effects that are happening now. So, you know, even though we may say, well, it it hasn't kicked in yet, it already has kicked in and we can't be afraid of having that conversation and having that conversation about what happens if nothing comes in. And it's not gonna be pleasant, but I think there's more anxiety by not having those conversations and by not planning it out than, you know, pushing down, you know, down, down the, down the bell or down the street. You know, the more we push it down, the harder those conversations are gonna be. So I'm glad we will have a conversation now and I hope we continue to have these conversations. And I hope we do have uh people from the administration join us and share their information, cause it shouldn't all be that. Yeah, you know, they, they, they have a huge part in this and I'm not taking that away from them, but share the burden, share the responsibility with us, okay? Keep us informed so that we can have a say in how we make these decisions. And then we all, we all share the burden, positive and the negative.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baller. And I'd have to say on, on this side, we, we, we're having these discussions, we, we need information to get deeper into, make, make some uh get further into conversation regarding this. Uh, Mr. Robinson.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to note, yeah, it, you know, uh, you know, billing the property owners is, you know, um, that, that's one caveat that uh, you know, one course of action. However, what I've known, I've, through some research with Buildings, Buildings and Codes, there are multiple properties in my district where the property owner has been deceased for a while. And so, you know, um, we run into an issue where, you know, every year, neighbors are calling me to complain about the property. I tell DGS and, you know, DGS has this information, they, they know this information. So I'm just, you know, and then, you know, we have to wait until the property goes into, you know, back taxes in order to turn it over to the county and that's even a longer process. And so, you know, I think we also need to have the discussion on what, what really can we do to, um, again, take care of these properties? Um, you know, so they're just not sitting stagnated and contributing to the, the issue of urban blight in our community, so.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Robinson. Does anyone have anything else at this point, uh, Mr. Shea?
So I just wanted to uh note in response to uh the concerns that the Buildings Department has that, that I wanna make sure everybody on the council understands that there, when it comes to property maintenance issues, when it comes to weed control or removal of snow, um, long grass, um, that those are things that DGS has the authority to take care of without going through the courts. Um, and it's, you know, I, I, I wonder why, maybe Brett can tell us this, um, why uh um some of our ability to abate uh nuisances can't, can't apply to the exterior, other aspects of. to the exterior, other aspects of the exterior of a house. But generally, the process is you, when a violation is noticed, the owner gets noticed. They're given, I don't know whether it's five or ten days to abate the nuisance and then if they don't, or the, the, the lack of property maintenance when it comes to weeds and long grass and that kind of thing, then DGS can go in with its own staff and, and then go ahead and bill without going through the courts on that. So Brett, do you know why that kind of thing can't be addressed when it comes to, for example, broken front stoops, broken windows and that kind of thing?
I don't know specifically an answer to that at this point, Judy. I'm sure the staffing issues within DGS are probably playing a role to some degree, but from a legal perspective, I would have to look into that for you, which I'm happy to do.
I would, I would appreciate that because if we need legislation to be able to have Buildings and Code have the authority to repair windows or stoops, I think that that is something that I'd like to sponsor legislation on. If it can be done.
Yeah, sure, I'll look into that.
During my time as a beat officer in the city dealing with those very issues, I, I recognize that, I'd see it because I'd be out in the neighborhood, you see it. I, and this is years back, I would call the DGS supervisor who would meet me at the property and cite it, put the notice up, it was a seven or a ten-day notice and most of the time folks responded and corrected the action. But if they didn't, on that seventh or that tenth day, I can't remember which one it was, I met the DGS crew back there and they mowed the lawn or re-whacked it, did whatever they did and they billed the owner. So I don't, I don't know why we can't do that now. I don't think we need new laws or any, just, I think the, of course, we're in a time of COVID, but, I mean, this problem goes back pre-COVID. Officers on the beat need to be doing what they're doing. Even DGS workers, they drive by these houses. Do they not have a responsibility when they see this to actually engage, to step out of the truck, especially the supervisors, in sight of, in eyes or of a property? I think they do. And maybe that's the kind of conversation we should be having with the Commissioner, with Sergio, about them being proactive because the thing is, I mean, you have your set responsibility and your route that you run, but if complaints come up, they have to be addressed and they need to be addressed and it, and it seems like they're not. And again, we're in a different time now for this time, but it, it, we need to try to get back to that. Mr. Igo?
Yes, I, I have the same concerns. I'm, I've been trying to get an overgrowth cut on city property, okay? Like we say right now, we already, I think, I agree with Derek and everybody else here, concentrate on the parks for the reasons said tonight. But, you know, it's not fair to go trying to find people when the city property is not being maintained at this point either. I mean, all along all the streets, I got, I could just show you, okay? But I know what we're going through, but to go after private homeowners when we can't take care of our own property, I don't think that's right at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Igo. Ms. Fay? You're still muted, Ms. Fay.
Judy was talking about building repairs, not lawn, lawn maintenance. So right, so DGS will come in and clean up the lawns if, if it's not done, but they will not do basic building repairs.
Right, but that, again, that, that issue and, and the way I always function and the rules I was taught, from the curb to, from the street to the front door is DGS and from the front door to the, to the backyard, the back fence, property line, is the Building Department. But the, I've had Building Department employees also meet me and do the same thing. DGS was most responsive and it's, we dealt mostly with stuff that was right out there that you'd see, but the same, the same idea will work. There are violations of the city code, you get a building inspector or a DGS supervisor or worker to cite it.
They'll cite the building repairs, but I don't recall them fixing steps and things like that.
No, no, they, they, they won't do the repairs. That whole process is kind of screwy and there's some issue with owners. By the code, you're, as a local owner here that doesn't still reside here, you're supposed to have a local agent that maintains the property and that's a contact for the city. Most, a lot of folks don't have that. Like Mr. Robinson mentioned, folks pass away and the records don't get updated and it just sit, the properties sit and languish and, and they get worse. So I, I mean, that's, that, maybe we need to look at that process or at least have the Building Department look at that process for, for dealing with those issues.
Actually, I think the administration was looking at that situation with people where they're deceased, try to help family members, because I have an issue on, on, here on the Seventh Ward, exactly like that. They, a lot of folks don't know how to go and settle their estates and things like that. And I believe the administration was looking at that, try to help families do that. I'm, I'm not sure it was through the police department or where, but I recall that. Does it, I don't know if anyone else does.
I, I can check in, check with the Building Department about that and see.
The guy was, for some reason.
Yeah, I do know the administration was looking into something along those lines. You know, even just getting better education out there about probating estates and settling estates and things like that. I don't know what the current status of that is, but, yeah, I think Councilmember Fay is right that there was some sort of effort in that direction.
And just as an aside, the Legal Aid Society of the Northeastern New York, they did, they, they have something out there that they're trying to tell people to do estate planning, given with COVID and a lot of people unfortunately passing away, there have been estate issues throughout the state now.
Okay. Any more hands or any others?
Like Robinson's hand is still up, but I'm not sure if it's still up from the previous comment.
Yeah, last point. The Commissioner told us, Sergio, he had a plan. He had a plan to address all the issues that we're talking about. And one of the things that we face the council with the administration is that there is no communication. If his plan was not working or if his plan was going to be altered because of COVID, this is something that he should have communicated with the council so that we can be aware and then, you know, we know how to move properly in this, in what's going on. And so I really think that the Commissioner needs to be called to the floor to explain to us what is going on with his response to the council and to the issues of our communities.
Okay, I mean, if we did that, it would be in a General Services Committee meeting, so we'd have to schedule that. Again, if we're, if we're, and I think I was pretty spot-on with, DGS is out front to the front door, Buildings is behind that to the back, to the property line. So, I mean, we probably need some kind of response from the Building Department or someone over there also about how they're handling these issues also. But we could, we could ask.
Kelly?
Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, but couldn't we call, is there a way we can call them in front of the full council? Because this is, you know, everybody's saying the same thing. And, you know, it's, it's been times in the past where they haven't come in front of committee meetings. So I think this is one time that you pretty much hear everybody saying the same thing. And it should be some answers. And, you know, and it's sad that we're at a time where we have to start thinking about FOIL and to get information because this has been the process for the three years that I've been listening. And, and, and when, when Conti was acting, he wasn't getting it and, and I'm hearing the same thing now. So is this the way the, the city is being ran? Because you're not, you know, we don't only hear about us, but you hear it about everybody else that's acting for information. So I feel some type of way because I can remember being told that I was gonna get an audit for the Waze, the Wade Center, and I never got that. So we need some help here and it needs to be some attention brought to the matter because if the, the administration is acting like that, that's why the Commissioners feel like they don't have to be responsive to the needs of the community. So I would ask that it be brought in front, in front of the full council.
Okay, well, we'd have to get them to a caucus. I'll work with Michelle to make that, that, that happen.
I, I will say that just, the, everybody can go to a DGS meeting. So I think it's something that, there's a lot more flexibility in scheduling DGS meetings and our caucuses run pretty long anyway. So it would, I, I don't see why we wouldn't just do a DGS meeting that everybody goes to.
Kelly? Yes.
Danielle, don't we have one scheduled for August 24th right now or is that not confirmed?
The 24th is scheduled.
So we can have him come in that time, right?
He can come in, yes. Him and Frank.
Okay, so there'd be an opportunity for, for members to question. Again, I'll do it however, whatever way members want to, but that's what the committees are for. And I was also thinking that caucuses, we have, we're dealing with a myriad of issues and legislation and things to try to squeeze what would probably be a lengthy conversation with the DGS Commissioner into a regular caucus.
So if I, I'm, I just feel the need to jump in, the 24th, that means that, that's, you know, three to four weeks away. We only get a certain amount of days for people to be able to enjoy the parks, the people to be able to come outside. So I just, that's the reason why I was saying bring him in front of, because I was trying to make it sooner, more than later.
He's on vacation for two weeks. So that's why the meeting was pushed all the way to the 24th. So I don't think it's possible to get him before that.
Thank you.
Okay, right. Anyone have anything else? I think we covered a lot. Any further questions, comments? All right, if not, everyone have a good night. That's adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
Take care, everybody.